Alright, calling the meeting to order. First point on the agenda, we're gonna go to the Emergency Responder Monthly Reports. We have the Honolulu Fire Department here in person. Yeah, you can go ahead and take your time.
Yes, yes. Hello, I'm Captain Sueta from the Honolulu Fire Department, Kahalua Fire Station. Uh, so just a couple of quick statistics. Uh, Wildland Brush Fires, we had one for the month of August. We had two activated fire alarms. We had thirty-three medical alarms, five motor vehicle crashes or collisions, and one mountain rescue. The fire safety tip for the month is move over for emergency vehicles. So drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law. Help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on roadway. This is more than a public courtesy, it's the law. Basically, it requires drivers of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer or other official duties as indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicles. Uh, number one, slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safer under the circumstances of emergency road situations ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to a complete stop before making a lane change under the paragraph. Two, make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary, and if it is safe to do so, or if possible, to two lanes over which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicles. Um, emergency vehicle means police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles while personnel are working. That's it. Any questions? Yes?
Aloha, I was just wondering...
Yes, yes.
Okay, your two fires, um, was that with your, and your mountain rescue, where was that located?
You know, I'd have to, um, get back to you on that. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think it happened on the other watches. But I know they had, um, they did have a brush fire, I think in the Waikani. On Waikani Valley Road was one of them for sure that I remember, but I'd have to follow up on the other two.
I know that the twice you got called through the Heia Kea Valley, I was wondering if that was the one? And if the, the mountain rescue was that off of the Heia Kea area also?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I apologize. It, it was definitely on the other watch, I don't remember it happening. I can follow up for you.
Okay, mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jiroki. Uh, we do have one more question online, uh, Uncle Rick.
I was just wondering if we ever came to understand what the cause of the fire next door to Key Project was several months back?
Um, I did, I did not hear about that one. I can follow up on that also and let the board know.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, buddy. Okay, moving on to Honolulu Police Department, HPD, in person.
Good evening, my name is Officer Carnegie and I do have my Lieutenant Akagi with me this evening. I come out of the Kaniwe Station. Um, so I do have some statistics here, uh, for motor, motor vehicle theft. Uh, this month we had two. The previous month there was one. Uh, burglaries, good news, this month there's zero. Last month there was three. Uh, for thefts, this month we have eight and the previous month was one. And for UEMV this month, which is unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle, that's two for this month. For the previous, it was four. And for robberies, thank goodness, there's zero for both, this month and the previous. Yeah? Um, the thefts do have a, a explanation why there's such a rise, eight from, uh, and there's only one last month, so two were from one complainant, just different, um, time elements. So that's why we have to make two separate, yeah? One was via online. And two others were items that were left at Kualoa. And when the person came back to look for it, it was gone. So therefore has the thefts, yeah? So that's, uh, any, you have any questions?
So last time we were talking about things that citizens can do to slow down automobiles.
Okay.
In that there are very few police visible anymore. In other words, for a long time, we had a policeman in the parking lot over here at the park and people would drive by slowly because they saw the car.
Correct.
And last time I suggested using an empty vehicle, just putting an empty vehicle there. And, um, I guess the officer said, "Well, we could do that if we had any empty vehicles, but we don't have any empty vehicles." And just a suggestion, I wondered if the average citizen, if it would be okay for me to put a blue light, just a single blue light, just like a light bulb, blue, on top of my car parked in front of my house? Because when people drive past, they slow down.
Right.
And you don't need more police and it has no personnel cost. And if just people would slow down, it would really be helpful. Is that legal?
On a vehicle, probably not, but on a home, like I've saw, I've seen blue lights where they're fixated to walls. Uh, they're fixated to, you know, uh, holes, their mailboxes, whatnot. Um, that is okay in their neighborhood, and I've seen all those visible. So maybe a car, uh, because if you drive around with it...
No, no, not driving around, just parked in front, right by the mailbox. Nobody in it.
Vehicle on a, soon kind of way, right?
Any kind of blue light?
But, um, will we visit the empty car parked in the park, uh, bring it up with our attorney?
Yeah, it doesn't even need to have a mannequin in it, just if people see the police car, they might assume that there's actually a policeman out on the field arresting someone.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for HPD?
We, we talked about this in the parking lot momentarily about you guys had some space here over the last couple of years and that got rescinded. I think it was a whole classroom, but I'd be curious to know what the conversation was about that. I, I worked at Key for probably forty years. And, um, you know, we, it's been on and off again, uh, you know, just having a, having a place to come, get on your computer, use the restroom, so on it. So I, I would like to kind of rekindle that conversation from a community aspect.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we'll talk some more about that. Good. Thanks.
Any other questions for HPD?
Yeah, I, I live near the Heia Kea Small Boat Harbor. So I was in the eat, late, late at night, I hear the cars, you know, they speed and big circles.
Mm-hmm.
There's this calling the police for that because, you know, it's a nuisance to you guys, you get to anywhere. But come after midnight, the boom boxes is really annoying. Even my neighbor on the road, he said it, it, uh, it, their house sometimes get the vibes on the house. And my son, he gets up at four o'clock in the morning, he said sometime it's even hard for him to sleep. And he has to get up early in the morning with a boom. So I hate to keep calling the police for that too, so maybe when you guys passing there, you guys can make a run, you know?
Absolutely. Sorry, well, which street was that again?
Uh, Heia Kea Small Boat Harbor.
Oh, of course, yes.
It's a hangout place. And then another thing too, couple of days ago, I saw that I go to Heia State Park, driving into Heia State Park. Um, I see this, well, this homeless people, there's a lot, I, I know this could become, a sting is coming soon to the Heia Kea Mountains soon. But there's a homeless Mahini in there with a small stitch hammer, and I saw the bathroom on the outside open. I did make a mention to State Parks about it.
Okay.
And I think it hasn't been open like for ten years since Kamana kids had it, so you might want to check on it because I, it might be doing, you know, this cup, the piping, this copper piping.
Uh, I see. Okay, yeah. I mean, they're more than welcome to, you know, the, uh, whoever takes care of the facilities. Can call us if anything is missing or broken or, yeah.
I haven't seen them physically there for a few weeks, but it's the first time we've seen the bathrooms on that side on the front open in ten years.
Yeah, I think we ha, I, I, I haven't gotten called on my shift to their facilities. I'm not sure if Day Watch has. Um, but yeah, they're more than willing, uh, more than, and we can check it out, you know?
Mahalo.
Yes!
Kind of seeing how the bathrooms are damaged, they call us to make a pickup jacket. Yeah, they still, they still make a pickup, they absolutely, or they...
Yeah, talking about this homeless, they going, I think there's a village up there upon a mountain. Because between the park and the long bridge.
Bridge, yeah.
Yeah, on a right-hand side, there's a parking lot now with all the bicycles.
Uh...
Right by the tree.
Right by the tree. So are we talking on Heia Kea side? Close to the water, water side?
No, 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 on the mountain side. If you're going to Kaniwe, you soon you pass the park, you make the first bend.
Yeah.
You want to, right down the corner, you want kind of big area, nice wide trail going up now.
Oh, okay. Do we know who the land belongs to? I mean, we could, we can find that out.
It's frequently being used.
Mm-hmm. We can email our community policing team.
There's another trail over there. Get, I think not too far away from there.
Okay.
But they do, he trails going up now.
Okay, we got, we can follow up on that one.
We'll have a follow-up. Thanks, Jiroki. That's you, Jiroki, one more.
To address what he just said, we are working with the police department and Kakao EV, and they are planning a sting, so all of this is our, we are aware of it. It's, that's city property.
Yep.
And the other, the other side of that is state property. So it should be either the end of this week or early next week, the police, I think Sergeant IU is in charge, yeah?
Okay, perfect.
Mahalo.
Great.
Any other questions for HPD online? Uncle Dan?
I know you're gonna leave and that's, that's great, but later on, and for some reason, again, it's on the end of the agenda, the Parks Director is gonna be here to talk about this park. And so I just wanted to alert you that we have several different groups of homeless people living around the park with unchained dogs, so they have their own couple of dogs. And as a result, what's happening is the dogs just come out if you're walking around the track or jogging, and they bite you. And so, and, and one of my neighbors called the police, and of course, the police immediately called the Humane Society. So by the time that takes over, it's really, it's really a lost, you know, a lost cause. And so I just wanted you to know that as a result of that, we walk around our neighborhoods now. We don't go to the parks. If the average person who's in their sixties or seventies, somebody who's diabetic or like me, I'm on blood thinners, we can't afford to walk there anymore. So now, so you might think, "Well, you know, that's your choice. You can do that. It's not a crime. That's not our business." But it really is because when I walk on my street, there are no sidewalks on a Hui Mino place, and we've asked for sidewalks. And the city has said, "Well, you know, there's really no way we can put a sidewalk there." And also, you probably remember there have been people jogging along the Ka Keeli Highway who've been killed because of driving, you know, cars going by.
Yeah.
So what happens is it moves the people who belong in the park out into the street, right? And so that makes, actually makes your work more difficult. And in the past, all that you had to do is have somebody park in our parking lot. You don't have to get out of the car. It's, they, they just see a police car and wow, they think, "I guess I'll keep an eye on my dog," right?
Right.
And in many cases, it's not one, it's a couple or three dogs. And I have a lot of heart and a lot of sympathy for homeless people, but they keep, they have, they're entitled to keep dogs and they're, you know, they're living around the track. So just having you park in that parking lot, doing nothing, makes a big difference in a lot of ways that you, you might not think of, right? So, so if you tell your guys, they can, yeah, if you, they can fill out reports and they can, whatever they want to do, but all you have to do is see what looks like a police car.
Okay.
We'll have them, we'll have them follow up on police presence. Any other questions for HPD online? Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I want to, I want to thank them for their first responders because I think they're doing a, a darn good job in our area for a little, they have to furnish this whole area. It's a big area. We mahalo you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, guys, especially coming in person.
Thank you.
They give you a little background on Officer Carnegie. She grew up in this state, that's why I selected her. She has the best experience. She also participated in the Bureau back in nineteen ninety-two.
Why, what's opening month? So I do think, I, why we're here?
Well...
I want to...
Appreciate it. Yeah. Yeah, we, we appreciate you, guys, coming in person and taking the time.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service, you, guys. Mahalo. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, we have Filling of Vacancies on the Board. Uh, first is Election of Officers. Do we have anyone willing to nominate somebody for the position of Secretary? Anyone willing to be the Secretary on the Board? Anyone online, any members online? I am currently working on a draft flyer, but I do plan to get out to the members, uh, shortly. Um, just for your guys' input and then so that you can review it, get back to me on any kind of feedback. And then I can apply that before the next meeting so that we can take a vote. Um, and I'll try and get that to you sometime by the, like, the next two weeks. So just keep an eye out for that, members online. Um, but we'll go ahead and defer that to the next meeting as well. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Four. Uh, the City State Federal Report, starting off with Mayor's Office. We have Regina, Malipei. Is Regina online? There we are, Regina. Yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Hi, this is Regina, Malipei, Department of Planning and Permitting. Um, I'm going to drop the highlights in the chat once I'm done. Um, but just some key highlights on the Mayor's, uh, newsletter. Um, he talks about the nearly thirty brand-new security cameras installed in Chinatown with more on the way. Um, as well as, um, some projects being worked on. Um, for example, Pentecola Street, uh, where they, where the city began demolition of a hoarder house. Um, I believe our department helped in with that, but those are just a few of the highlights there. And I'll drop the link in the chat for you all. Um, some departmental issues to follow up on from the DFM or, um... We were talking about the Haiku Road Sidewalk Cleanup Request. They actually submitted a, um, request to DPP for our Residential Code Enforcement Branch to investigate, um, the sidewalk condition along Haiku Road and take the appropriate action. Um, I don't have a direct follow-up on that yet. I think it's, um, being worked on, but I can get something at our next meeting for you. And then there was a grass maintenance request. Can there be a grass maintenance in the areas between Heia State Park and Heia Kea Pier? Um, DFM submitted a service request and it was initiated for grass cutting in the city-maintained area of Kameha Highway, area between Heia State Park and Heia Kea Small Boat Harbor. Um, city maintenance is scheduled to be, to be performed by the end of September. Um, they also initiated, um, a request for DPP to investigate the sidewalk condition for the area fronting Heia State Park to Heia Small Boat Harbor. Um, I believe the, they're saying that the maintenance responsibility is the responsibility of the, um, of adding property owner. Uh, Department of Design and Construction, uh, there was a request to bring a staff, um, member out that handles pre-assessment consultation for highway, uh, roadway rehabilitation, erosion mitigation, and environmental assessment that can attend one of the board meetings. And DDC thanks you all for inquiring about Kameha Highway along Heia Kea. The Department of Design and Construction is in the early stages of concept, design, and environmental assessment. Uh, when, when complete, they will present the information to the Neighborhood Board. Uh, in the meantime, you can continue to send them your concerns. Um, and then DTS responded that this is under Department of Design and Construction's purview. The last, uh, follow-up was with the Department of Recreation, but I believe Director Dlin will be participating later. Um, and then finally, I know one of the members brought up a comment about like demolition permits, um, and trying to streamline and expedite like simple demolition permits through the Department of Planning and Permitting. Um, I don't have a full report on that, but I wanted to let you know that we are working on, um, stream, streamlining that process so that it's not simple demolition permits or not, um, stuck behind other major or more complex reviews. Um, and as we start to, um, work on like a triage process improvement, we will let you know, um, what all that entails. But that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Any questions for the Mayor's Office?
Regina, um, regarding the grass, the guinea grass that's growing along Kameha Highway in particular. Um, we're thinking about areas like when you get out towards Waiohole, which is a state highway. Um, they have an articulated more, you know, the, the side, more off the side of the tractor. Um, very efficient. Is there any way that the state and the county can collaborate on that kind of equipment? Um, because that's really what's needed. That guinea grass grows so incredibly fast. Um, there's no way to keep up with it with, you know, periodic weed eating and so on. It needs to be mowed. Um, but, um, you know, some collaboration between DOT, maybe and DTS, I think would be, would, would resolve the problem on a regular basis. Thanks.
Any other questions or concerns for the Mayor's Office in person, online? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Regina, for your time. We'll see you next one with the follow-up. Mahalo.
Okay. Mahalo.
Uh, we do have, uh, an email from Councilmember Kia Ina's office, so we're gonna, uh, they are apologizing. They're not gonna be able to attend tonight's meeting. So we're gonna skip over, uh, Councilmember Estri Kia Ina's office and move over to Councilmember Matt Wires' office. Um, do we have anyone online representing Councilmember Wires' office? Yeah. Isn't Elizabeth? I don't know. That's online. Good. Okay, skipping over the council member, uh, as well, we'll hopefully get a City Council Report, um, emailed to us or reach or if they could. Uh, so we're gonna move to Border Water Supply. This is Barry online. No, Barry. They're skipping over Border Water Supply. Actually, if we could try and address that and see if we can get new rep? Because I don't think, I think Barry's been absent for like the last three, if that's, if that's correct. Um, we have Governor Josh Green's office. I think we have Katie online. I think I saw Katie. There we are.
Yes. Aloha, everyone. Apolo... ...person tonight. Um, and, uh, so I will just, um, do the usual, um, sharing of the Governor's message from his newsletter, and I do, again, I do apologize for not being in person and bringing hot copies. Um, so the Governor's message this month is that his team, uh, visited Maui last month to commemorate the one-year mark of the Maui wildfires. During his visit, he had the opportunity connect, to connect with numerous members of the community, listening to their stories and sharing in their grief with a, was a profound experience. The tragic miracle remind us of the importance of community, compassion, and solidarity. Each life lost in the wildfires was an indispensable part of our community. Their absence is keenly felt, and we will always remember them as family. Governor Green is deeply touched and constantly reminded by the bravery and strength displayed by the community over the past year. Let's continue to support one another and nurture hope. Together, we've shown that we can overcome the most challenging of circumstances, and by doing so, we are honoring the memory of those we lost by continuing our recovery. Mahalo to the countless partners who helped Maui recover by clearing the debris and building several housing projects to house Maui's displaced residents. A new school and a new health clinic. I'd like to thank every individual who has served and sacrificed for others. While we have made significant progress, um, and I am immensely proud of what has been accomplished, there is more work to do. I am confident that we will get to a place where Maui can once again be a safe, nurturing, and thriving environment for its people. These can celebrate and share their culture and traditions, and where every member of our community feels supported and loved. Uh, follow-ups from the last meeting. There was an inquiry about the sewage treatment plant and concerns that, um, it's not working. So I did get a response from the, uh, DLNR Dolbor that said that there is work, um, being done. However, they're not aware of anything not working properly and that enough leaching into the beach waters. Um, so if there is any evidence of that happening, to please let them know, and you can let me know, and I can pass the word along. Or you can contact, uh, DLNR Dolbor's office. I apologize, I don't have a number for them. Um, but I can get that to you. Um, there was also, um, oh, uh, the fact that Kameha should be back, Kameha, the parts through Heia, um, which is, I guess now under the county jurisdiction, is more ideally situated under the state. Just to let you know that that sentiment was passed on to the Governor's Office. I did not receive a response to that, however. Um, finally, there was a question about whether the city swap had been done with regard to Kalahail Hillside to the DHHL or the Department of Homeland. That is still being under review. To my knowledge, that has not been, that transaction has not been completed. It's been announced, but has not, there has not been any formal, um, passing of the property from the county to the state. Um, but the comments that were raised at the last meeting were, were definitely passed on to the DHHL. Um, other than that, don't have anything else to report, so if there's any questions or comments I can take back to the Governor's Office, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, Dan?
So my question from last time was about the sewage treatment plant at Heia Kea Pier. And so what I was asking was, my understanding is it's finished, completed, but it won't actually be working for a year. So could you go back and ask DLNR about the sewage treatment plant that's on the surface of the parking lot at Heia Kea Pier? In other words, it's a leach field, and at some times, it's below sea level when the sea comes up with the king tide, and it's covered with water along with the parking lot. I'm not, I wasn't curious about that. But I was curious to know whether or not that is gonna be used at all because there are hundreds of tourists who use that boat harbor to go out and look at the coral and on all the, you know, the boats that go out with the tourists. So my question wasn't about any other sewage treatment plant, just that one, at the end of the Heia Kea Pier, near the public bathroom. Okay, it looks to me like it's done. When is it gonna be done? Because there are actually hundreds and hundreds of people every day who use that comfort station. Thank you.
What happened? Anybody else in person? Anyone else online? Yeah, Uncle Rick?
Yeah, Daniel, they're working on the, the pumps and all that kind of stuff. If you see adjacent to the bathroom, they're still, they're still constructing the, um, the first part of the system, which is the pumps and all that kind of thing.
All right, right on. Yes, Uncle Rick, we'll have her follow-up on that as well. Uh, Katie, if you could do me a favor as well, um, if you could go back to the Governor's Office and, and, you know, just as we're heading into this, uh, new fiscal year, um, just as fresh, could you send over his priorities entering this new fiscal year?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, any other questions for Katie? Yeah, one more. Uncle John?
Katie, since you work with Department of Homeland, um, there, there are DHHL lands, some lots in Waioholi Valley. Um, I'm not sure if they're assigned or not, but they're vacant. And, uh, this is on the north fork of Waioholi Valley Road, pretty huge infestation of alveja that is just turning into a full-on sea bank, um, spreading seeds all over. So if we, if you could, um, maybe connect, connect us up to whomever we need to be speaking with there. I've spoken with Andrew Choi in the past, but, um, yeah, if you could help with that, that would be much appreciated.
Okay.
All right. All right. Any other? Okay. Thanks, Katie. Appreciate it. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Mahalo for your time. Moving to Senator Bretzenawala's office. Do we have anyone online? We had Elizabeth. Oh, here she is in person. Oh, there she is. Okay. Okay, sorry for any technical difficulties. Uncle Ken, could you see us that whole time, just for reference? We're okay, okay. All right, um, let's see. Okay, as we have technical difficulties with Rep. Peter Gawa's office, we're actually just gonna go back to the regular agenda order. And since we have Senator Awal here in person, we'll have Senator Awal take the mic.
Chair and Board. A couple of updates. We got approved from the Department of Transportation for an extension to the Kahole Foutree project into a Hoi Manu right in front of the public housing. Um, we don't have a date set. We don't quite have what types of trees, so we'd like to hear what types of uh, fruit trees you guys would want. Uh, we had donation offers of avocado so far and some farmers we talked to tried, want us to try like you. Um, but talk with us, send suggestions, the plans aren't final, it's not that we did get it approved from the DOT though. Um, we put in an application two months ago. Um, with the city Department of Parks and Recs to formally adopt the uh, eight or so acres next to Keahaiapohai. Um, so we should hear back next month on if that's approved or not. We, we talks with them, we could without giving too many details, the, the city's gonna go in, they're gonna hire a contractor to clear the two streams over there. And, and we said, hey, if you're gonna do that, who's gonna maintain it? Um, after, and they said, we don't know, we can't do it, but we're gonna do this one time. So we said, hey, we're gonna use this as a catalyst to get in there and, and let the community do it and us through us. But, so that's what that was all about. Oh, and then Haleiwa, um, if you guys have considered this, we just finished a Haleiwa Foutree project. That's kind of directly in response to the CRB. We planted sixty dwarf open nuts with food in between those outright by the bypass Joseph Leon and Kamehameha Highway on Haleiwa Beach Parkside. I know it's not in our community, I figured, but you know what we're uh, doing out there. And then we set that up so we can show the community right off the side of the road how to manage. So we had the experts come in, net it, we check it once a week, water it out there. But also what we're doing from the Department of Agriculture, they give us a bunch of those traps, you know, the hanging ones that only catch ten or so percent. But we're looking at the farmers nearby, um, who will allow us, will work with us, you know, Simon, we got about four of the seven grants, the twenty five K grants that the Department of Ag put out, four of those are in our districts. So we wanna work with people on that side who got them, plus what we have ourselves on the Department of Agriculture. And new non nonprofits are working with us to combat it out there. But we wanna work with them to put these traps, maybe mulch piles, um, so the traps can bring in, catch some mulch piles, can catch the rest and then maintain that. Kind of like how, I'm not sure who did, but somebody did and Kaniohe would do, like a larva roundup. So, but that's it for us.
Any questions for Senator? Good then.
Thank you for coming.
Mahalo.
Sorry, couldn't make the last one.
No, no. Uncle John?
So the CRB issue to me um, is that is a massive issue. Uh, it's gonna be devastating for farming because it's not gonna be only palms, but it's gonna go to ulu bananas, arrow even. And um, the real question in my mind is, when do we get started on the biological controls? Because we can't be wrapping trees. Um, that's just totally impractical.
What do you, what do you suggest? Are you talking about fungus, one fungus?
I, I'm not suggesting any particular biological control. I'm suggesting that we get started looking for those, put money towards researching biological controls because it takes a long time to do that. Um, you know, I'm remembering back to when, uh, when they're planning Calla Regional Park and they planted Willie Willie trees and it was all great. And then Willie Willie across the whole state just got nailed. Um, and they managed to, they saved seed and so on while they were doing the research. And they came up with some effective biological control. And we all know that's kind of dangerous, it's kind of scary, biological control, if it's done out of control. Things like the euglandia snails brought in to take land out from snails, ended up wiping out native snakes, so on. But uh, but, but that money is needed to start doing the research and it's not helping. I don't see Department of Ag moving that far. It's really critical. That's a long-term solution. We may lose all our bombs, we may lose all kinds of things, but if we're working on the biological control, um, instead of waiting, let's get started. So one thing I'll say, other thing I would want to put out about CRB is that, you know, for years, getting mulch is like getting gold barbers. If you had a contact with somebody who would drop off mulch, it was real burdens. A lot of people would pay for it, trade it. But I think the time has come to control where all mulch goes and manage that. With traps, with uh, processing, and then these thing about, you know, getting things to go through and some, what Mark Stride was doing, um, okay. The Luko for the past weekend is great, but if, to me, it was more of an indication of bad problems. So, you know, if we come back to controlling where all mulch goes, that means sitting down with the tree trimming industry, landscaping industry, having some very serious discussions, a very different system approach.
They agree with what you're saying, John. Um, we work with the Department of Ag and the Farm Center, we work all there too.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks Senator. Uh, good then, in person, and then Uncle Ken online.
Just ten seconds. How, how do I reach you? What, what's your phone, your phone number?
Eight oh eight, five eight six, seven three three zero.
She's the Uncle Ken online?
Uh, yeah, in order to supplement what John was saying, uh, we need uh, to look out for invasive species. Because mulch and other of these plant exchanges processes are what's creating uh, a lot of our spreading of invasive species. Mahal.
Thanks, Uncle Ken. Anybody else in person, online? All right, thanks Senator. Appreciate it. You guys, mahalo. Have a good night. Um, Rep. Kitagawa's office, uh, is Wendy there? There's Wendy.
Hi, everyone. Um, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, great. I'm Wendy. I work for Rep. Kitagawa. We just wanted to share that we had our fifth annual drive-through flu shot clinic in conjunction with Rep. Matayoshi's office. This past weekend at Winwood Community College, Times Pharmacy administered the flu shots. And we had, we gave out over a hundred seventy, I think it was a hundred seventy-three flu shots to the community members. So thank you to everyone who came out and helped out. We had a lot of volunteers as well. Um, and just to let you know that we do send out an e-newsletter every Friday afternoon. So if you aren't on that distribution list, please just email our office at repkitagawa@capital.hoi.gov. And I'll put that in the chat as well.
Any questions for Rep. Kitagawa's office? Yeah, Uncle John?
Wendy, thanks. Um, thanks to Representative Kitagawa for kind of getting us started talking about the sewage issue in our area. We all know between Hoi Manu and Waioholi, probably the densest concentration cesspools in the state, the island, if not the state. Um, so there are some meetings that are taking place, conversations taking place. Key projects slightly involved in that, um, you know, others of us in the community and also the Hoi Green Infrastructure Authority. Um, some, some meeting coming up. I, I just wanted to bring that up because I think it would be great for your office to have some representative in those meetings. It's, it's not, it's not just a matter of figuring out how to fund, how people deal with cesspool conversion. Uh, again, to me, it's a, it's a systemic problem. We don't know what to convert to. The world doesn't know what to convert to from cesspool septic systems. So I think it would be great for your office to continue to be a active part of that discussion. Others like Stuart Coleman and someone as well. Thanks.
Thanks, Uncle John. Yeah, Uncle Dan.
Wendy, could you ask the representative, would she be willing to um, author or help us author a bill that would provide a, a conversion fund so that people who want to convert their aging cesspools uh, to new septic tanks or who would like to connect up to existing sewers? I'm not, I'm not interested in, in, you know, inventing anything new. I just wanna help people who have to dig a trench to get to the sewer. And I think the state ought to be the one to fund that through a revolving fund. You know, in Pennsylvania, we had the same thing for oil tanks under the ground. The state actually pays you to remove an oil tank in the dirt. And they have a, you know, they have a fund so people can apply for that money. And it's such an enormous amount for the average homeowner to even consider repairing a broken septic tank or connecting up to a sewer. Would you, would you ask your uh, representative if she would be willing to author a bill to help us create kind of a super fund, revolving fund? That people could apply for state money to help repair their sewage systems?
Thanks, Uncle Dan. That's a good idea. I like that. Um, any other questions, comments, concerns, members online? Person, you guys okay? Okay, thank you Wendy. Appreciate it for your time. We'll see you next month. Mahalo. Um, I don't see artists online, so I think we're gonna skip over Winwood Community College. Uh, we'll come back to her if she does pop up. Um, we have Uncle Cliff from Kanawaki Bay Regional Council. Any reports? No reports. Uh, we have Jota Kuda's office next. Anyone from Representative Kuda's office? Oh yes, I'm sorry. Oh.
So I called someone from the Oahu and I called them that we did not have a representative um, vacancy in the Kanawaki Regional Council for a few months now. If they could have it filled and I did talk to Kuike. And I don't know who's gonna talk to, but hopefully by the next Kanawaki Regional Council meeting, we'll have their presence in the meeting. Mahalo.
Mahalo. I believe they're acting on that. I believe they're working towards that. Um. Yeah, we have a question. Sir? We're still on the regional council yet?
Kristi Kalaweebo for the Kai Watch, which is an offset of the Kaniohe Bay Regional Council. They are going to have a meeting October first underneath the um, the Harbors Division, the office. So that's, that's open to uh, different individuals who are interested. So that'll be at nine AM in the morning.
You know, the, the subject matter of the meeting?
I do not.
It's just a monthly routine meeting?
This is no, quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Um. I don't think we have anyone from Representative Kuda's office, right? No? Okay, so we're gonna move past Rep. Kuda's office and actually, nice to hear you back up for the Kanawaki Marine Corps Base.
Well, this is my community. Um, good evening. Chair, members of the board, Kristi Kalaweebo, Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Um, I'm going to just share a few themes and we do have a presentation. I have um, our Deputy Director of the Installation and Logistics onboard online who will be doing a presentation. But uh, just a few things from me. Uh, the first one is next month, we would request another opportunity to present. And Uncle John was there at our installation resiliency review and they have already completed um, a review and are ready to prepare to deliver to the neighborhood boards and we would like some time on the agenda next month. Ten minutes would be probably sufficient. There's a handout that I shared um, to um, Rachel. And uh, we'll have those available for um, everybody next month. Um, but just for you folks now, and there's a QR code that you can click on, which is really interesting. So I'm gonna save it for next month. Uh, up and coming though, tomorrow, there's going to be a change of command uh, for General Journey. And just for the community to be aware, they're going to be using a cannon during this ceremony, which will probably have twelve very loud um, booms, but just so the community is aware. So if anybody asks, it is um, a ceremony. Um, also, one last thing before I turn it over to Bob Piaszeki. Norris Concerns and Reporting, we have just completed and put online today a new form that people can go online and put in all the information, whether it be air or any artillery firing or any noise. It's a form that is filled out and it goes direct to us where all the data is collected. And that I will have for you also next month. I believe I've requested that a QR code be made for that so it's easily accessible. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Bob Piaszeki online.
Thank you, Kristi. Great job as always. Uh, can everyone hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Bob.
Great, great. Thanks. Aloha, everyone. Um, good evening, Board. Uh, good evening, Auntie Rocky. Thanks for having me tonight. Uh, what we wanted to do tonight was give just a quick five to 10 minute update on some um, developments and improvements that we are moving forward with regarding our wastewater uh, facility, the water reclamation facility on MCBH. And um, we know that this is a, a significant concern for the community and for very good reasons. So we're giving the same brief to uh, the Kailua Board and also the Kanioe Board. So if, I, I provided a slide um, to Mr. Spencer and so if that is up, I'll just kind of be talking through that. But as everyone is aware, in the past and in recent years, we've had a couple of what's called exceedances where we um, the quality of our effluent from the treatment plant on the base falls below what's in our permit. And so that's bad. And we've been um, getting after some projects currently that are ongoing and programming future projects that will enable us to improve the quality of the effluent. And also to uh, give us the ability to produce recycled water, R, we call it R2 water. Um, to irrigate all of the Clipper Golf Course and then ultimately to produce R1 water, which will further enable our ability to reduce potable water use and use recycled water for um, a greater multitude of, of uses. Right now, we have a couple of projects ongoing and one that we just recently completed to uh, upgrade our electrical, electrical controls, excuse me. And then right now, uh, we have an ongoing project to repair the secondary clarifier and also the primary digester. So without getting too technical, that just means that uh, it's going to increase the reliability of our treatment processes. And in the future, we have uh, this military construction project that uh, has been appropriated. This year in FY24, uh, Congress uh, approved the first appropriation for that project, which is a new development since the last time I spoke with this board. And that's really good news because that means that we will be able to award that project in the next fiscal year. In large part with great thanks to uh, Rep. Takuda's office. So they were a significant ally in, in getting us uh, the appropriation for that. So thanks to their office. Uh, that project will enable us to produce this R1 water that I talked about. And then our uh, potable water consumption on the base should be reduced significantly. Uh, also next year, we are awarding a disinfection pro- uh, project, which will um, also increase the sustainability of our operations and improve the quality of our effluent. What that means is that it will, uh, our, our effluent, as many folks know, if you've seen in the news, our effluent mixes with the effluent from the Kailua- our effluent mixes with the effluent from the Kailua Regional Treatment Plant and shares an outfall out in Kailua Bay about three miles offshore. So uh, all of these projects, that just means that we're trying to do our part to keep that total combined effluent uh, below the um, compliance level. And so I, I've talked a little bit about um, the recycled water. I know that's a big concern for everyone. And um, uh, I think last time I spoke at this board, Auntie Rocky asked some questions about the recycled water. So currently we are in what I'll call Phase One of getting to a place where we can reinstate use of that recycled water. So uh, since the last time we used recycled water on the base from our plant to irrigate the golf course, uh, the Hawaii Administrative Regulations have changed. And so we're currently in coordination with DOH to look at our processes and share some like design information to see what's possible right now to start um, to start using recycled water on our golf course before any of these projects are done. Um, so they've been a pretty good partner in, in, you know, um, seeing, seeing what can be done now. So uh, I'll, I'll wrap it up by saying that um, we recently renewed our wastewater permit for that plant. It goes out to September 2029. And in that new permit, um, we have some additional requirements for things like continuous monitoring of effluent. Um, all good news stories, I think that, that will um, hold the base to a high standard of, of um, quality of the effluent from that plant. So that's about all I have. Um, open to any questions right now.
Any questions? Yeah, I'll go down.
Bob, I had a question for you. One of the ways that we know that the effluent does not meet the standards is that state law requires a publication in the newspaper when it's over the limit. And there are many times that it's not over the limit. And so I was hoping that someone would report that fact because we have, I don't go onto the base, I'm not allowed to go onto the base, but I have no idea what happens there. But the state requires that the citizens be told when there is an overflow or there's an incident at, you know, where the effluent doesn't meet the standards. Could you ask our Representative Kristi and provide her with the information monthly to let us know at the board meeting? What the status is every month? I think that was the intent of the law. And, and if you don't, it's a very small note that's in the local paper. If you don't see it, you'd never know. And so I think it's really important for the Marine Corps to let everybody know that there wasn't any outflow problem, just as important as it is for us to know when there is.
Uh, yeah, thanks for that comment. Um, that's a great point. I will um, jot down that note and, and talk with Kristi and with our environmental folks about it. Um, and, and it, it can be confusing for folks sometimes when, if there is um, uh, an exceedance from the Kailua Regional Plant, whether it's, it's the base or the municipality and understandably it, it's, it's confusing because of that shared outfall. Um, but I agree, i- it's, it's important to communicate also not just when, when there is um, an exceedance, but, but if there's an exceedance from the regional plant uh, to, to publicize that it, it's not from the base. I, I think that answers your question, sir.
Done.
Since, since the state is always, state and county are both always struggling for funding. Uh, it sounds like the funding for the kinds of improvements that you're doing on the base, our Department of Defense um, is a source. Can that kind of funding extend out into the community that, um, that the base is a part of? Because there are a lot of uh, um, employees and, and uh, you know, folks who are associated with Marine Corps Base or Hawaii, live out in the community. And if this is a shared outfall, um, this is a conjoined system. Maybe we can get funding, federal funding to help us with the challenge of dealing with sepples and so on. Just wanted to put that out there.
Uh, so the, you are correct that the, the funding um, that the base receives for the kind of projects I was talking about. Uh, those are Department of Defense funds and so they're supposed to be used for specific purposes like on military installations. However, there are other programs uh, that Department of Defense maintains that um, serves to improve infrastructure outside the fence line in the community where there is a shared goal or a shared interest uh, between both the community and Department of Defense. So I, um, having some knowledge of those different um, tho- those different regulations, that's something that we can look into and maybe engage with our community liaison office. Yeah, thank you for that. Um, there was one more thing I, I forgot to mention. So that large military construction project that's being awarded next year, uh, that requires a NEPA environmental assessment, which we recently had awarded to a contractor. And that means that there will be a public comment period for that EA going out um, about January. That's the schedule currently.
Auntie Rocky, question?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I agree with John that it's, I think in this era right now, we, we should be working together as a partnership and bringing the funding out to the community because, you know, what is good for the goose is good for the gander. Because I have O'Hana that works at the plant in Aikai and they don't always give out information when they're leaky. And they need even more than the Marine Corps Air Station. But I think if we can work a partnership together with both Marine Corps Hawaii, the Aikai Plant and the community and get those fundings into the community, it'll do great justice for all of us. Another thing is the Kola Pukamai Civic Club, we have a um, government relations committee and we have been meeting with our legislators um, to talk about the um, um, the, the water for your uh, golf course. And we understand that, that the, the, the Health and Human Services is not allowing the water to go through. So we asked the legislators to help us with that because of the fact that a, a lot of our water is shared with the HIA stream that's going into um, Marine Corps Hawaii and we'd like to see that taken care of. So they're looking into it. In fact, I just had a meeting with two of them this past week and we'll be looking into it and hopefully we can all work a partnership together. Mahalo.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think we're closer than um, than we were at the last meeting with DOH.
Awesome. Mahaladui.
Just kind of one last comment. You know, the Kola Pukamai resilience effort, right? That's what it's called, Kristi, right? Um, all of this, all of what we're talking about, whether it's septic systems or water resources, sea level rise, all of this is about resilience into the future. So yeah, I think we have to have, we have to have a much closer relationship um, from, from here on in. Um, the base is out in Mokapu, formerly used defense site in the back of Waikiki. We haven't even begun to address. Formerly used defense sites, Waikani, Aikia. Um, so the military's, maybe, maybe its current footprint is out there in Mokapu. Its past footprint is all over our community.
Thanks Uncle John. Any other questions, concerns uh, for, for anyone online? But seeing none, Auntie Kristi, do you have anything to say to close out? Are we okay? Okay. Uh, mahalo for your time. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Awesome.
Would you have one quick question from Donald, actually, before you head out?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Uh, Donald Sakumoto Kanihoi Neighbor Board at Lodge Member. Uh, thanks for your presentation. Uh, if you're going to do a presentation for our Neighbor Board 30, uh, I'm legally blind on the board. If you can send a slideshow in a alternative text format so I can read it to my virtual talking software ahead of the meeting so I can understand what's being said. And uh, doesn't the Marine Corps uh, base have a newsletter that you can uh, um, sign on and get news uh, stories or whatever updates from the Marine bases there? That's how you can go to.
See Kristi.
Um, I can get you that newsletter, Donald, and there's actually a link that you can click on. Um, so we can give you both ways. Um, also, we are scheduled to do this presentation next week at the Kanihoi uh, Neighborhood Board as well.
Okay. Appreciate if you can get some documents to our Chair ahead of time or alternate format for me. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks Donald and thanks Auntie Kristi and thank you Bob for your presentation. Mahaladui, you guys. Okay, that's gonna clear us out of that one. We're gonna go to community topics. Uh, we have the Residential Animal Sanctuary. Um, wanted to go ahead and do your, yeah, we did wanna make an announcement. It was uh, per request of one of the members last meeting. So, go ahead.
Thank you for remembering uh, uh, my little presentation. Thank you so much. I, I read the newsletter. Um, and thank you for um, the attention you're paying to this. Um, so far, um, I would call it a peace institute because it um, is not only just helping animals, but it helps people a little tiny bit. Uh, I, at one point I was going to teach music to uh, some, a group of kids. So then eventually I decided to combine my uh, interest in helping animals and children and adults and, and so forth. So um, we may have a little tiny bit of meditation scheduled. Um, children's reading and uh, um, um, and other things. We may have uh, 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 what do you call it? Um, pamphlets giving out or newsletters um, to share about, uh, you know, what's happening in the neighborhood and praise the wonderful people and the events. And um, at the same time, it's just sort of like a, a way to communicate with one another uh, to raise awareness of our, you know, our um, surroundings and so forth. Um, and um, the goal is to generate peace. Um, in a sort of a, um, you know, in the Western civilization, we uh, call it a spirituality, but um, in other parts of the world, it's just uh, a way to live um, uh, simply and uh, in a, in a, in a sacred way, so to speak. I don't know if that is making any sense. But anyway, and uh, and thank you very much. Um, I, I wonder if you have any questions for me?
Thank you for your, your follow-up. Um, were there any questions regarding the, the animals? No, we're okay. Okay. Anyone online? Okay, mahaladui. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna move on to um, the community park concerns. Um, you know, um, we did have Director Laura Thielen gonna jump on uh, virtually. She did find out that the meeting was gonna be a little bit, um, she didn't find out the meeting was at six. But she said she was gonna be a little bit late. But if you guys, I know you guys had a little bit of concerns regarding the parks. If you guys wanted to give some background or address any of your concerns, just for context. Um, just to kind of wait and see if Laura will jump on in that time. Okay, okay, we'll just go ahead and defer um, the community park concerns. Uh, we'll move on to residents' community concerns. Um, but do you have any concerns, residents? Yeah, community members? Go ahead. You can take the mic. State your name, please.
Aloha Chair, Board Members and Community. My name is Karen Awana and I'm the Director of Advancement for Kalia Academy. We're a brand new public charter school that opened our doors in July to 106th grade students. Our school, although um, it, it's located in in the Kalihi area with a public charter school are open to all areas. We're not bound by geographic areas. And with that said, we have some students who reside in your Neighborhood Board region. So I'm here just to share a little bit about our school. What makes our school a little unique is that um, we're focused on hyping um, tech jobs of the future. Our curriculum is um, focused on data science and artificial intelligence. We have our students buying drones, doing computer programming, mastering augmented reality as well as connecting with their community through e-cyber mission. Um, although our enrollment is filled this year, we are accepting applications for next year for the sixth and seventh grade. You will be accepting another hundred students from the sixth grade and also any vacancies that come about next year. Um, if you'd like more information, you can contact us at kaliaacademy.org. And I also have some files for you all. Thank you so much.
Any questions? No? We're okay? Yeah? Mahaladui. Thank you so much. Uh, with Uncle Donald, he had a quick question. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Donald Sakumoto again, uh, as a blind individual and a paratransit rider of the paratransit handy van and advocate for President uh, for citizens fair Americans with dyspeic right. The city has purchased some rear entry vans of the lift on the roadway as well as a stairway that is very difficult for disabled people to walk up and down. Very dangerous. Uh, these are sunset uh, van vehicles that they purchased 14 recently. Uh, there's a procurement of, of, I think 15 more by the city. I express my concerns as a blind individual, disabled person, that it's dangerous for people to traverse on these vans because of the disability of the stairway as well as being dropped off on the roadway with traffic. So if you have any concerns about the van for those of you who ride the service, recommendation to call Paratransit Handy Van Department of Transportation Services. Phone number is eight zero eight seven six eight eight three zero zero. If uh, do not answer the phone, leave a message, they'll get back to you. And uh, you can express your concerns about this vehicle. And one last thing, Chair. Uh, our meeting for Kanihoi Neighbor Board is next week, Thursday, the 19th at Benjamin Parker Elementary School at 6:30. Uh, I apologize for our meeting from August 15th, which was canceled due to a incorrect WebEx uh, link. But uh, we will, we'll have Lee Nagato from Hawaii State Department of Transportation to give a, a update and take Q and A from uh, the state transportation. But thank you for allowing me to speak. Bring me there.
Mahaladui. Thanks Donald. Thanks for being present. Um. See, uh, we're gonna go ahead and finish out community concerns. We do have Dr. Laura Thielen online. But uh, we're gonna finish with the people in person. Go ahead. Yeah, you can take the mic and then we'll go ahead and move on to the folks online.
Thank you very much Chair. Uh, my name is Melody Aduhwa, former member of the board, actually a while ago, as well as a former state senator of this district. And I just want to say that uh, one of our main concerns now, of course, we all are aware of Red Hill and that that spill, that actually it gets 80 years, this village is moving. And it's moving to the IA well. It's been determined that it's there already. Border Water Supply has has closed down the IA well, but it's moving beyond that. Now it is moving towards the I believe it's the Ka'amilo well. And so that is really gonna affect that side of the island, of course, because that'll be the first well that is now still open to the residents of that area. So I'm here before you to let you know that of course, the windward side, we have the best water. And it will be tapped if necessary. It's right now, Border Water Supply is dealing with that area of the aquifer, which is covering 70% of the island. Once that, uh, again spills over, then they're gonna come somewhere else and they're gonna come here. So just to let you know that we wanna safeguard our water by making sure that that spill does not go beyond right now, the IA well. But the next well is only a half a mile away. So the chances are that it's gonna reach IA, past that, is there. So just wanna let you know, they're gonna come here unfortunately because we have the best water. Thank you.
Any questions, concerns? Uncle John?
Melody, thanks for coming tonight. Good to see you working on some tough issues. Um, and uh, and raising this concern because, you know, I share that concern pretty deeply. You know, for, for years, we have been uh, told that we're pretty well insulated from our water going around the corner and leaving the rest of the island. That's simply not the case. Rini Law and his crew, you know, whereas in the 60s, the border watch supplies planning was simply drill a hole, liner clearing and dropping around the well site. Now they're probably the most advanced planning at the municipal or state level. But this is over for them. So I really appreciate that. I, I also want to raise to you the, the concern I mentioned earlier this evening that places like Waikiki, back of Waikiki, which is a major source of water for the waters, um, is now essentially formerly used defense site. We haven't even begun to wade into that issue. We haven't even begun to wade into that issue. What happens when it's a butt site is you gotta establish a restoration advisory board and, and, and generate the discussions that start to address what may also be polluting even our water here. So, um, just wanted to raise that for you because you have been involved in this and looking ahead, we're gonna need people like you to be a part of that.
Well, thank you. I think we did want to look into Waikiki. I'm sorry.
IA too, yeah. So, yeah, Waikiki, um, this kind of came about because we were pushing for the border water supply potentially take on jurisdiction all the way down to the gate. Laura Thielen's online. She's calling this Department of Parks and Grasslands. Large chunk of land. They're kind of pushing for the border water supply, ironically, us pushing for our supply to take on more jurisdictions. So they have control. They did their due diligence. They engaged G seventy and planning outfit, G seventy. They came back with people like Erwin Calada and others. Well, we don't want to take on this problem. Therefore, it's sitting in Laura Thielen's lap. But together, all of us, we all have to address them, site by site, wherever the military has been. There are residual issues that cannot be addressed.
That's right. So we're concerned now that it has hit the IA well, right? And so Border Water Supply could just be, as well as the Y to have at least one hundred monitoring wells. Right now, I guess the Navy's there, there, there's only a certain parameter that their, uh, test sites are okay. But it's beyond there. Now that it's went to the IA well, it's going way beyond the testing ability of the Navy. So now we need to get the Navy to fill, you know, those ones, you know, how far as well. That's it.
Uncle John, if you guys wanna, um, just email me if you guys wanna agendaize it. Yeah. Or, or Melody, you can email me too. Um, if you wanna give my email after this. Yeah, just feel free.
I think that would be a good idea at some point. Last meeting, we talked about taking an entire meeting and avoiding getting to an issue like this. I don't think, oh, it's water or sewage or whatever. These are really turning up huge issues that we have to take on. So Neighbor, Neighbor Board can help with that. We can help promote discussion, broader community discussion.
Yeah, they're coming here. I mean, if there's nowhere else, they're gonna grab our.
Sounds good. One second. Sorry. One second. Auntie Rocky, go ahead.
Hello, Melody. And I agree with John. Maybe we should just, you know, have a, have them on the agenda. Have, uh, Red Hill. Because it's gonna be an ongoing thing. Fight the military, fight back and forth. Maybe we should start having a meeting on solutions. And I think the meeting should be on how we're gonna, uh, protect our windward waters.
Uh-oh. Uh, your question? Go ahead. In the mic, please. Well, she can, well, uh, next month when we agendaize it, we'll have more time to explain. We just have a little bit of time for this one. If we're gonna roll, yeah, no. Go ahead. What, what? We'll try and coordinate that. Mahalo Nui for your input. Okay. Thanks, Melody. Mahalo Nui. Yeah, Mary, go ahead. Online.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. It, it seems like I follow a disaster every time or a potential disaster every time.
No, no, you're good.
And this is something I know we've talked about, uh, for quite a while. But anyway, my concerns right now, uh, I'm with, uh, Connie Oake, Kahalu Cert, uh, are that, uh, we might be missing out on, uh, rather good financial and support services. Uh, is Joe Watt there in attendance?
No, not tonight.
Oh, okay. Uh, the reason I ask is because he's been involved in, in what I'm gonna talk to you about a little bit here. Um, that, uh, the services, the financial and support services that I'm talking about are, uh, with, uh, community resilience efforts that, uh, regard such things as, uh, centers that can be used in blue and gray skies, uh, which means nice time and bad time, and such as key project. And also for projects that, uh, board members might be interested in for their districts. Back in November, I approached the board, uh, asking the members to look at their districts and, uh, try to identify. And I know you guys and gals do, uh, uh, strong points and weak points. And, uh, at this stage of the game, uh, the financial and, uh, grant support, uh, which would be the financial, but also the, uh, advice support and direction support linkage, uh, is through these agencies, Serene, which in your, uh, notes, if you would please, those are capital C E R, uh, E N E letters, and Vibrant Hawaii, which refers to the Big Island. Um, and we'll, and the Castle Foundation, uh, that are looking, Castle Foundation is obviously mostly financial support where the other two are advice, um, and, uh, consults. And during the financial and organizational, organizational support, they're pushing for, uh, December. Uh, we've been meeting monthly, uh, uh, pushing for December for Ko'olau Poko communities to present to them uh, projects that they think are viable along the lines of things like pods or hubs or resilient centers. Now, I know some of you might not be familiar with those terms at all, and I'd be, um, more than happy to, uh, discuss them with you further. You know that. Um, but, uh, anyway, it's coming up in December and I, besides Key Project, um, the only other project that I know that is moving towards something is, uh, Kailua, uh, with a resilience center. And, um, we have one and, and, uh, Ken, I think it's in your district, Apahuimana Road. Is that you? All the way up? It's a pod. Okay. It's a pod. We're working with a neighbor on this. But other than that, that's the only things that I know that Kahalu has going. And the reason I, I kind of wanna be that bear in the saddle, uh, under your saddle is that what started out as a Ko'olau Poko initiative has now expanded to, uh, Ko'olau Loa. And it's, uh, changed into a Ko'olau, uh, initiative program, which I don't object to, but, um, like I said in the beginning, I don't want us to be missing out on opportunities because we haven't put our requests in.
Okay. Appreciate it, Mary. And is there anything else? Sorry, we're just kinda.
Yeah, no. Okay. No, that's fine. That's fine.
Did you have anything, any other concerns that you wanted to address in your time?
Nope. That's good. Same thing.
Um, anybody else online? In person? No? Oh, yeah. Uncle Ben?
Aloha, Ben Shif. I noticed that we have a, uh, scheduled meeting on September twenty fourth candidate event, right? Yeah. Uh, a lot of times we have, I have, uh, I'm joined by Halu Ko'olau Loa. Not sure. And I might have to go to Waikiki because all my years are there. If we could have one day that are not, those are not scheduled, that'd be great later on. But, but I'll come to this and because I'm gonna miss stuff and not sure neighborhood board meeting. Thank you.
Uncle Ben, any questions? Concerns? Okay. Mahalo. Um, we're actually gonna do a small retract on the agenda. If we can go back currently to Barry Usagawa at Border Water Supply. We see you online if you want to do your report. There we go, brother.
Thank you, Chair, and I apologize. I thought I started to happen. So, anyway, um, yeah, just a short message, general announcement tonight. We have, um, Imagine a Day Without Water, uh, function coming up. Uh, it's on Saturday, September twenty eighth, uh, from ten, uh, AM to two PM at Kapolei Regional Park. And, um, there'll be, um, various state, city and state and community agencies and organizations there. Uh, there'll be activities that focus on the value of water. And there'll be interactive exhibits, including rain barrel workshops, uh, surf skate plant craft activities and succulent mini workshops and more. So, uh, some food as well. Um, mission is free. Uh, and to find out more, uh, please go to our website or visit, uh, yeah, borderwatersupply.com, One Water Hawaii. And, uh, that's my, that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barry. Uh, questions? Auntie Rocky?
Yeah. Um, Barry, the question I have is why can't Border Water Supply and the city's planning department work together before they issue out major permits to building subdivisions? Look into the water system first. How much water are they gonna be using for houses? Or was it for people who's not even here yet? If we don't have the right supply for people who are here. Just thinking about that. We should look into that. Mahalo.
I should too.
Yeah, for growth. Yeah. Yeah.
Donald, online?
Yeah, Chair. Uh, thanks for the presentation, Border Water Supply. My question is, uh, I listened to Ernie Allow talk about desaluration plants on, uh, radio one time. And I know that our wells have fresh water on top and, uh, spot water on below. Uh, if the IA wells are being contaminated and they're gonna tap off on the winter side, uh, can the federal government, uh, Department of Defense or federal government give money to the world's water supply to have a desaluration plant on our side to help the people on the other side? So we don't lose water on our side as well as help the other side. Is that a possibility?
Well, we are working on a desalination plant, but in Eva, in Kamauin Dushu Park. I know the manager and our board, um, have been investigating how the Navy, you know, could, uh, potentially repay, you know, um,
Ready?
For, for the cost of the, um, for the cost of the, the, the shutdown and the cleanup, you know, for Red Hill. Um, where are those fundings if we ever get them, you know, would, would, would go? Um, right now, we're trying to put in replacement wells in the IA.
What?
Area. So not, um, I think Windward's water is, is, as Melody was saying, I was, I think it's the best on the island. Uh, I think it's secure. Um, and we have no, um, plans to, um, there's not enough to actually move to the town. So, um, but yeah, that, that's, that's, that's our current plan.
Okay. I just, I just put it out there. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for the, uh, we were still trying to get reinforced. So, thanks.
Okay. There's no more questions. Thanks, Barry. Appreciate it. Thanks for your, oh, on the mic. One more question, Barry. Sorry. One second.
Aloha, Barry. This is Melody Aduhua.
Hi.
Hi there. So we already know that there's contamination in the IA well and it appears to be going to the Ka'amilo well. What, if anything, or what's, what's the projected plan? Cause it's only a half mile away from one well to the other. So where is Border Water Supply? What it's gonna do if that plume should hit, um, the Ka'amilo well?
Yeah. So I, I know we're continuing to test the IA well. Um, you know, the, the, the challenge is we, we don't know whether, you know, the, waiting for the Navy to kind of define where the contaminant plume is, you know? Um, but yeah, we, we did pick up something at IA. So what we did in response was we, we, um, we're not pumping Ka'amilo as, as much. Um, that's Ka'amilo is just above the freeway, you know, on Ka'amilo Street. It serves the, um, I guess the IA area. I had an up, up Ka'amilo side. Um, we are looking at, um, uh, options for a, a portable treatment plant, just in case. But I wanna make clear that we have, we're not testing anything at Ka'amilo. I mean, it's, um, we're not picking up many contaminants, but I know they are testing frequently, like weekly to, to make sure. So that's what I understand we've been doing so far. Um, but yeah, the, the, uh, the continued testing, looking at some temporary treatment.
My understanding is that the Ka'amilo well that's actually supplying a million gallons a day.
We can. Well, we can continue this conversation.
Yeah.
When we go ahead and agendaize it. Yeah. No, no worries, Melody. And then Barry, I don't know if, um, you heard the prior conversations.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, it, yeah. I mean, if you wanna come with something, you know, um, just, yeah, keep in mind, we'll probably talk about that next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Mahalo. Thanks for your time. Uh, if we can move on, we're gonna go ahead and touch base with, um, Chelsea from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. We see her online as well. I'm gonna give your report.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me join on.
Hello.
I, um, I will go ahead and share the, um, our, our handout, our flyer with you, Chair, so that you can disseminate it with all of the folks here. Um, it's gonna be published on, uh, the, the city council's website, uh, shortly after this. Um, but I did wanna just go ahead and report on some of the things, um, such as Bill forty-six. That's just like pending policy that is coming down the pike here. Um, Bill forty-six is the, um, taxation on vacant homes. And so the intent for this is really to discourage real estate speculation, land banking and encourage the use of vacant properties to address Oahu's housing needs. Um, and so we're just, we're just looking to gather some input from the community because, um, council member wanted to focus on refining the bill to ensure that it protects local families while addressing the broader issue of the housing availability. Um, what I understand is that, um, Bill forty-six is gonna be on the agenda for this committee meeting coming, um, coming up at the end of the month, September twenty-fifth. And it's gonna be in the housing one. And so we just invite you for, um, any feedback or suggestions as far as amendments go. Um, other things to report out, policy-wise, some good news. We did have, um, Bill three recently signed, um, by mayor. Um, that one, um, incentivizes, um, uh, housing to be built on smaller parcels in the urban core. Um, and so that way it, it wouldn't necessarily be like this giant, huge building, um, like, like the ones that we'll see like in town, but it's just optimizing on smaller parcels. So that way those can get, um, those, those can be utilized for, um, affordable rentals, if that makes sense. So that, that's something to celebrate. It's something that, um, I wanted to share with you folks here. I'm happy to take any questions. Or we also, we also celebrated some other really fun things like, um, uh, the Ko'olau Loa Hawaiian Civic Club on their one hundred years. So that's, that's the flyer as well. And then I think if you haven't heard of it already, but, um, I understand Key Project is having a fundraiser coming up on October twelfth. So just sharing the good news. If you haven't come, if you haven't been out there yet, um, there's gonna be a lot of food and a lot of fun, I think, October twelfth from four to eight PM. Now happy to take any questions back to the team and, uh, I'll try to answer any questions as well here as to.
Any questions? In person? Online? No? Okay. We're all good. Thanks, Chelsea. Appreciate it. Thanks for your report. Um, we're gonna go and move on to, um, what was it? Emily? Emily from Rep Takuta's office.
Hi, um, Chair and members of the board. I'm Emily Natori with Congressman Takuta's office. Um, in August, the Congresswoman spent a lot of time here in District. I believe that you should have received her August newsletter, which highlights some of the, um, main things that she was up to. After spending most of August in the District, uh, she's back in DC now. And the House will be taking up a continuing resolution before the end of the federal fiscal year, which ends on September thirtieth. Um, as of right now, our office is receiving applications for any students who are interested in seeking a nomination to a military service academy. And so if you want more information, you can find that on the Congresswoman's website, which I will, uh, drop in the chat. Um, and yeah, we definitely welcome applications from a diversity of students throughout the district. Uh, please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for Rep Takuta's office? In person? Online? Seeing none. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. You have a great night. Okay, so now we can come back to, um, word, no, I'm sorry, community topics. Right, uh, we're gonna go ahead and proceed with community park concerns. I know earlier in the meeting, we said we were gonna, um, defer that, but we do have the presence of Dr. Laura, uh, Director Laura Thielen, um, virtually. So, um, first point of business was the Kahului Regional Park Homeless Encampment. I know that that was first brought to the attention from Aladon. So if you wanted to touch base on that?
First of all, I wanted to thank you. There was a wonderful, wonderful parks person whose name was Leah for a long time took personal responsibility for our park. And when I would walk around the track, she would say, I'm not gonna let anybody live on the edge of the track. But as it is now, on the outskirts of the Kahului Regional Park track, we have three groups of people living with dogs who are not, uh, properly leashed. And so if you're walking in the mid afternoon, um, the dogs just come out and they bite you. And, uh, there's no police, there's no police presence at that time. And it's very difficult now for seniors and for people who are concerned to use the park at all. And it hasn't gotten to be what I would call a serious problem, but it's gonna be a serious problem. And I don't know what happened to Leah because she was really wonderful. She was a splendid parks person. And I wonder if there's some way that you can address the people living on the outside edge of track. In other words, the football field is perfect, but as soon as you step, you know, over the track and into the, into the brush, you'll see there are a couple of different encampments of people, um, with their animals and, and they're living there. And I have a lot of sympathy for them, but the fact of the matter is over time, we're gonna lose the park. Um, and I wanted to alert you of this problem before it gets to be a problem that you won't be able to solve. In other words, before it really grows and becomes a very popular place for people. So as it is now, there are lots of people who don't use the park because it's not safe anymore. And they're, you know, instead they're walking on the streets, they're walking on the Kakiui Highway and we might have placed uh, where it's, there may or may not be proper sidewalks. And so, uh, we wanna alert you and and maybe you have things that you could tell us that we could do about that, uh, that this problem before it gets to be a very big problem for you and all of us.
Director Thielen, if you, I think you're still muted. If you have, there we are.
Sorry, sorry. I wasn't sure that you were, um, asking me to speak at this point. So I'm at, I'm at Manoa District Park, um, and I'm calling you folks on my phone because I had another, um, event tonight. Can you hear me okay?
We can see you fine.
Loud and clear. You're good.
You want me to repeat the problem? I can do that.
No, 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 I, I could hear you. There's, I'm sorry, there will be a lot of background noise from the activities.
We don't hear a sound.
Oh, okay. Well, um, so, uh, thank you for, for sharing the concern. And it's certainly something that we hear a lot about in parks around the island. Um, we work with the Department of Facilities Maintenance to do regular, what they call stored property ordinance, where we are, um, cleaning, um, uh, unpermitted property that's being stored. We do give advanced notice to the people who are there. Um, but we schedule two of these stored property ordinances in each of our five park districts every month. And then we will also work with the police department in between these events when we have some criminal activity or, or other things that are going on. We know that, that this is not a solution to the problem. So there is a lot of work that the city is doing on, uh, partnering with the state and putting, building out places to be able to take, uh, people for, uh, mental health treatment, drug abuse treatment and, uh, medical treatment. And, um, that, that, those types of services have not been available. These places that the city is building out with the state's support for the treatment, the mayor's working on about two hundred beds. And these would be, uh, places where people can be taken for three to six months to get the treatment that they need to stabilize and then be moved into housing.
So I don't, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the people we're talking about, they have, they have no desire to do anything other than live out.
I understand that.
They're not interested in any of that. They, they're happy where they are.
Yes. So let me, let me continue. This, this has been a problem with what they call, uh, chronic um, houseless. There's some, uh, about fifty percent of the people who are houseless have repeatedly refused services. We have had two court cases that are allowing the city to move forward in a more aggressive manner in these cases. Uh, so one was, we were being sued by the A C U to say that our stored property ordinances in parks were illegal. And the Hawaii courts upheld it, what we were doing and said that it's completely legal. And they actually pushed back very hard at the A C O U and said it's not in anybody's, you know, civic rights to be sitting on the street in their own feces and unable to comprehend the situation they're in because of mental health issues or drug abuse issues. So we were upheld the work we were doing. And then after that, there was the United States Supreme Court that said that local jurisdictions do have the right to require people to leave. They do not have the right to sleep in parks or stay in parks. So the city is using their, uh, four, um, the, the, and the former ambulances that they transitioned into this medical treatment to actually go and pick people up and take a more, um, strict posture. I mean, you obviously you cannot kidnap people, but to say today's the day, get in, you, you cannot stay here and to take them in for treatment. Um, and then some of these Kahali beds that they have at places like a former La'ahi Hospital, uh, Kahali that they're building out in Eva Lake and some other locations. We, we did get notice the, uh, district manager working with some of the encampments in your community. Uh, we posted signs at some of the areas where, uh, these are unimproved parklands. So they're not areas that the public is allowed to go into. And we're working with H P D to be able to enforce the no trespass signs in those locations. Um, the district manager is working with H P D and we've gotten the signs posted in those areas. And then for the park area, we will work with the district manager, um, to be able with the, um, medical services, uh, to see if they can bring their four vehicles out and to try and move some of the people in these locations. We did take some action about a year ago in the park, uh, with some encroachment in the area and we were successful with that. And so then we'll, we'll do the same. Unfortunately, it is a little bit of a, a whack a mole issue because there are encampments up and down the Windward and North Shore area. And so, um, you know, we have to, we have to go back and forth and, but it sounds like it is definitely time to be working again in this community.
The reason I started by talking about the employee who was there is she was wonderful. She and her companion cut the grass together. And she just walked out and told the people, you can't live on the side of our park. And you have some wonderful, wonderful parks employees who were paid purpose, I mean, very little money. And they take personal responsibility for many of these parks. So you, you are to be congratulated. I just think it really boils down to how that person who is in charge of that park deals with this specific problem. And if they're, you know, out on top of it, it won't be a problem. We cannot count on the police. We know they don't have people. We've asked them, you know, to be there. We know when the dogs bite us, they turn us over to the humane society and that's around and around it goes. And so I just wanted to alert you, you have great people. I know they're not well paid. But it would be really, that I think I would begin at the lowest level with your, your, you know, people who are in charge of the parks and who really care about them.
Yeah, thank you very much for complimenting them. I know we do have a number of great staff. It takes a special type of person to be able to walk up to folks that are homeless and to be, and to have the demeanor to get them to listen and to move. And we really, really appreciate when people do that. We don't have every staff that's comfortable with that. And so we, we work where we can, but I'll, I'll inquire about what happened with that one particular staff person. Um, and, and again, we'll work with the district manager and the staff there to see what we could do. Um, it, we heard, we heard the request. When you asked about what the community can do, um, activating parks is really some of the best way to get people to move out of them. We recently had a partnership with an organization that has been helping us run classes at Makiki District Park and reaching a portion of the community that we had not been able to reach because there, there, there's a large Korean community there. And it's really increased the number of, uh, fall and spring classes and year round activities that take place at that park. And they had a couple of residents basically who decided to move out because the park had become more active and they didn't like it. So if there, if the community is interested in working with us, we would love to work with them on ways. We have adopt a parks. We have other types of partnerships that we do. And we've been exploring those options as well.
With that, just a
Just a ten second addition. It might be that all you have to do is cut the brush back about ten feet away from the park. And maybe people will figure out that that's not a place to put a tent. So it might be a simple fix. I'm just saying that, you know, somebody from parks has to go out, take a look and see where they are. And if it's necessary to trim the bush and get it all, you know, all level and clean, that might fix it.
Uncle John, you had the, um, you brought the last, the second point of the importance of park public use.
Aloha Laura. Um, nice to have you here this evening. Um, we'd love to have you in person. I wanna go back in time a little bit. Um, you know, I sat on the Kahului Regional Park Advisory Committee that was formed when we were, uh, starting to look at development of the park. And, um, you know, we were pretty successful. We got the roughly seventeen, twenty acres uh, moving where the play fields are and the, uh, the round the playfield walkway and so on. What did not happen was the rest of the park, all the way back to Waheh Stream. What did happen in, you know, since then is the whole back part of the park, um, has become way overgrown fiddlewood and gunpowder trees and so on, as you know. Um, you, you raised this, uh, you use this terminology of unimproved parklands. And I'd like to see us explore that, um, much more thoroughly. Um, I wanna go back real quick to the Kahului Regional Park Advisory Committee. Um, actually, that committee got authorized by the city council to stay in existence and be a consultation, uh, be in consultation with Parks Department and the city itself. And I think that may be part of the solution looking forward is to kind of reconvene that, um, advisory committee. Um, so that you have a, a steady, regular point of contact. And we can talk about the balance of Kahului Regional Park that never did get developed. Um, with regard to the unimproved, um, parklands, um, if, if by posting signs and acknowledging the areas that are unimproved, um, and giving authorization to H P D to, to, uh, step into those areas, that would be a huge help. Uh, we've worked with H P D quite a bit on this part. Um, it's so overgrown though, that there's, there's really no access. There used to be roadways and so on that get to the back of the park. That's what we need to clear. So the Department of, uh, is it Facilities and Maintenance? Um, you need an excavator with a mulching head, gotta go grind up a whole bunch of trees. Uh, Parks needs to plant its flag around the property just to the back of Key Project here. Because other than that parcel, everything else is parks. Maybe another couple of parcels against the stream by the, um, where the, uh, where Waheh Stream meets the flood control lagoon. But, um, yeah, I look forward to a much more detailed conversation that we might have to develop a strategy to take back so that we can go in there and occupy more effectively. So looking forward to that conversation.
Any other questions or concerns for Director Thielen? Anyone online? Uncle Cliff, anything?
Yeah, I think that, that park there, I think, go back, we just cleaned it sucker out like how it used to be. Because this, once upon a time, the city used to bring the machine now. And I don't know, probably ran out of money, funds. So all the bush came up. I think if you go in and we clean them out, those campers would probably automatically will move out. No question. It's all clear.
Well, yeah. I mean, Dr. Thielen, I think if it's a capacity thing, um, you know, I think we do have community members who are willing to volunteer their time. Um, so if it comes onto something like a right of entry application or a permit to
We, we have, um, and thank you for the, uh, promotion, by the way, I'm not a doctor, but, um, uh, we, we have streamlined our adopt a park procedure. So we have, um, fairly simple forms now for any community group that wants to sign on to do, you can do a one day volunteer thing. Or if you wanna do it on a regular basis, an adopt a park program is for like four events a year. These forms have all been pre-approved by the Corporation Council. So as long as you kind of stay in the, the clearing and, you know, things like that. Um, we have an adopt a park coordinator and then we can provide support for the activities. And then once you sign the agreement that says this is what we're gonna do, you don't need a permit for the, the cleanup activities that you're gonna do. We just ask that you give notice to the park staff just in case they have another event going on at the same time, so they can avoid conflicts. So we're trying to make it as simple as possible for communities to work with us. We did do a, uh, an agreement with a group out in, um, Haleiva for an unimproved area where we, we work together with them to do the clearing and now they do the maintenance, um, every, you know, quarterly to keep the invasives from growing back. So that's the kind of thing that you folks can, um, work with the district manager and with the adopt a park coordinator to set up. If you would like to do that for that brush area, we would really welcome the help. And, and even though, you know, we can probably get to locations, maybe not everywhere that everybody wants us, but we do have some resources. The fact that the community comes out, that just sends a huge signal to everybody else in the community that this is our park. So that kind of combined partnership um, brings a tremendous amount of benefits to the area beyond just the park department doing the work.
Uncle John, you had something to say?
You know, I can see adopting a park that's been developed. Um, but we're talking about the unimproved area that is so growing. You're talking like forty foot, fifty foot trees and so on. It's, it's just simply facilities and maintenance needs to get in there. Heavy equipment needs to get in there. Um, State of Start Preservation Division gave the city a good scolding for not having done the, the work that they needed to do to look at that back area. The former Loi is in a flood zone, um, former, you know, Hawaii systems that come through there. Um, we really need a thorough look at this park. The other complication is that huge area of the park as you, on the Kaniue side of the developed playing fields, um, there's kind of a triangle there um, that goes all the way over to the, uh, outlet of Waheh Stream into the Oliva. And that area was planned for future dredging of the lagoon. That's also a complicated issue, as you know, we've talked about that. Um, some of us have advocated for never dredging that lagoon again and looking instead in, in, uh, developing a managed wetland because we need the filter that's there. And there is no place to dredge that material too. So this is, this is a regional park. It's a major park. And I think we need to, uh, reconvene, uh, kind of a task force approach so that we can look at all aspects of this. Cause it also has one of the major streams on Oahu coming down through it. So, um, you know, it, and it's complicated. So I think it, I think it needs a bigger touch. Yeah, there, there, the sports organizations that are there, they're willing to help, uh, for the developed areas and so on. Um, but we need a major cleanup sweep, get everybody out of there, make it more accessible. So, you know.
So John, certainly what you're talking about is that, that is a large area and there certainly are areas that are complicated. But there's also some pieces of it where there can be activity that takes place, uh, partnerships between the community and the park that would make more immediate changes and may help. As the one gentleman said, you know, clearing out the brush on that one area by the fence line make a difference for the people that are encamping there. So I think it's good to be thinking in terms of some simple things that are short term, some midterm, and then the long.
Yeah.
Because if you wait until you can get the whole plan and the complicated thing, then, then things become very stagnant. And so, uh, the adopt a park solution, which we do for both improved and unimproved lands. And as I, as I mentioned, in some of the unimproved lands where it, it is a heavier lift, we, we come in together with the group and do some of that heavy lifting. Um, but that may be, uh, some of the simpler areas that it would be suitable for, and we are open to that.
Okay. There's an area on the Maoka part of the park that basically is off of the, uh, Kahului Community Park area, off of the school. Uh, we called it, we've called it Kahului Park. And, and folks have gone in there and, you know, Key Projects programs and others have gone in there and and really opened it up as farmland, which is great. A really excellent place for kids learning about, uh, food security and so on. So that would be one area if we can get really good solid permission, um, to, uh, clear out that area again, you know, reopen. It was, it was well taken care of kind of pre-COVID. So that would be, that's, that would be It was, it was well taken care of kind of pre-COVID. So that would be, that's, that would be one area that we could, we could tackle. But the other thing that I think the city could do is um fence the area around the Kuliana that is right behind Key Projects, not a huge area. If that private Kuliana is, is fenced. You're basically declaring where the park's boundary is. Then anybody outside of that in the back area that's unimproved will be illegal. You post a science and HPD, they'll go in. You know, we've, we've talked to HPD folks that live right up the road. They'll go in and they'll route out those folks. But if they're able to run to this Kuliana parcel back here, then it's hard for HPD to touch them. So you have to, you have to plant your flag, gotta run, run that fence back. You know, many years ago, um, the plan was to put in that fence line. Um, so we need to define exactly where parkland is and where parkland isn't. Especially in the area right behind Key Project. It's, it's having a huge impact on us. I was here Saturday morning and one of the homeless folks uh came to Key and he was bleeding from his hand. He'd gotten attacked by a dog. HPD got called, we had to dress him up and, and send him off in the ambulance. So it's, it's very real. Anybody, i- if that was a kid, they might not have made it. So we've got to define where parklands are and where they are. So that, so that we know who's Kuliana is whose. So yeah, appreciate your being here tonight and uh, you know, beginning of a conversation.
Yes, and thank you, John. And it's always a pleasure to have a conversation with you. Um, as far as the, the planting and the Kahului, I believe under the prior administration, you know, there, there was a lot of um resistance in the park department to do those types of partnerships. But we have, we used uh the, the downtime during COVID and we got some of the ARPA money and we worked through some of those policy issues within the department. And so we do have adopt a park planting agreements now. And this would be the kind of activation that, you know, we want to have the partnership with the community to do. Because it does what you said. It puts a kind of a stake in the ground. This is community space. We're building this. We're doing education. We're growing leadership. So if there's an organization that wants to take the lead on that and to work with us again, that would be another you know, kind of small win and, and simpler piece to go forward. We don't have the park staff that have that knowledge and understanding, you know, so we, the partnership would be from the community organization to try and run those programs. Um, and then, you know, we can work with them on what the requirements would be under an adopt a park. And really the requirements are mainly to protect the fact that these are public spaces. It's so that no adopt a park organization can turn something into a private space. And so it's just, you know, kind of putting that into it is that it, it has to be open to the public. Members of the public are welcome to attend and and that. But the, but it's like our classes. You can't just barge in to a class. You know, you have to sign up. You have to, you know, behave. And so they, they can be run in a very positive educational, um, you know, good, good manner.
All directed. Um, you know, I think we'll go ahead and um, we'll go ahead and organize ourselves and, and our next steps as far as what we want to do as a board. Um, but we do look forward to uh working closely with you and um, you know, City and County Parks and Rec. I appreciate you guys taking the time out tonight. All of you. If there's no, one last question for Manti Rocky.
Oh yeah, I have a question. Is there anywhere in, you have a CIP budget to hire maybe some kind of manage, manager, part time even? Because there's a lot of people that want to plan because on the HCDAs side, the Hawaii Community Development side right now is that they're loaning out uh plots for um community uh function, uh, community people have different uh plots for going uh Kahului or um so uh different kinds of um vegetation, flowers and stuff. And this, if you could do the same thing with city parks, it'll beautify the parks. But you need some kind of management. Because right now, I know far back, as I was aboard at the HCDAs side, we have a waiting list. We have eight plots right now loaned, loaned out for people to do the Kahului or whatever, flowers, whatever. But we have a waiting list, people wanting to do it, families and groups wanting to do it. And I see a lot of thi- this can be done because the water, perfect, Waheh Water, it can go perfect with this park over here. It's just a suggestion. Mahalo.
All right. Malanui, thank you all for your questions and thank you for your time. Director, we appreciate it. Um, we'll be in touch if we have any other uh further questions, concerns or follow up that we need from you. But thank you for your time again, Malanui.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure meeting with you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Um, we did already do residents and community concerns, so we're just gonna go ahead and discuss subject matter committees. Um, last uh meeting, I did ask for you guys to send me interest in any kind of subject matter committees and I got no emails. So shocking from, from my, from all my members, yeah. So um, I'm gonna go ahead and take that as um, I'm gonna go ahead and take the liberty, um, if it's all right with you guys of, of crafting this and mocking something up. Um, purview bylaws, um oversight, right? And the way I want to run this is I want to have these committees basically address things before it comes to the greater board, right? So the committees I'm looking at right now are broken down into Hawaiian Affairs, Land and Natural Resources, Public Safety and Parks and Rec. I have four that I can think of right now that I'd like to implement. And so yeah, we can do that as well if you want to do something like Government Affairs. Um, if there's any other suggestions.
I, I suggested last night, I'm a believer in committees of the whole. And the reason I say that is that it's hard for us to um kind of carve out time to be on committees as, as neighborhood board members. But if we function as a committee of the whole, then what that does is that gives us the ability to focus on those particular areas you just laid out. So if we're gonna have a committee of the whole meeting, um, we can make it a regular meeting. Everybody's in it. But we're gonna focus on that land and natural resources. We're gonna focus on parks. That, that gives us maybe better control over our agenda. So we're not kind of just scratching the surface. But I've seen, I see, I've seen the city and county, the city council do that as well. So just, just a suggestion.
And, yeah. Yep.
One of the problems tonight is we have more people on Zoom than in the room. And so that really changes the whole dynamic. But, you know, with just a half a dozen of a six or so people sitting here, it's very difficult to have a reasonable discussion. So I think, you know, to the people who are on Zoom, that's, it's great that you are able to make the meeting via Zoom. But if we don't have any discussion here, uh, in front of the people who we need to see in person. Um, it just changes the whole character of any kind of committee structure that we might have. So let's try to get back here. I don't know if the six o'clock meeting is, did it or what happened, but we, we don't, you know, we don't have the in the room, we don't have a forum. Uncle Ken?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm surprised you, you didn't have um uh infrastructure. Uh, I requested uh what, two, three months ago, keep infrastructure on there. Uh, we've got a chair and a vice chair or co-chairs, however you want to call it. We're very active. Uh, we get stuff done. Uh, and we don't always bring it before the board because a lot of the stuff we have to do is better dealt directly with the uh agency involved and the person involved. We resolve a lot of issues. So uh, I, I would really like you to reconsider and put uh infrastructure back on that list. Because we've been active and we never stopped being active.
Yeah, I'm totally open to it. Uncle Ken, not even, not a problem. I was just
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, yeah, just trying to feel it out, feel what people still want to go with and feel what people, you know, kind of want to move towards moving forward. Anyway, yeah, Manti Rocky, but
I, I gotta, I've gotta commend Parker for doing his best to try and get this organized as such, but I kind of agree with um, Ben, um, Ben Bender and John and to get the group together here, it'd be better. And maybe we should table this to the next meeting. And, and I think, you know, when you commit the, the resources and you commit, our interference is almost the same thing to, to me, you know. So maybe we can come up with, you know, different kinds of committee, share different kinds of committees. And if people online can make an effort to come to the next meeting, so we can all discuss it together, it'd be maybe a little bit better. This is a suggestion. Mahalo.
Um, one other suggestion in a way would be to change the tone of the meeting by recognizing some of the organizations that you are already members of, like the Hawaiian Civic Club. Maybe we should present an honorary certificate of whatever, you know, for what they've done. So that the tone of the board isn't always looking at things that are negative. And occasionally, you know, we recognize the scout masters and we recognize the employee of Parks who did such a great job before she quits, you know, before whatever happened to her. And, and so if we turn it to become a little bit more positive, I think people will bring an audience and then there'll be a better reason for some of the representatives who are elected to show up for us here.
I say something, Daniel, well, up you on that, we just, the Kula Pukua Civic Club just made a seven, eighty seventh birthday. And at our luncheon, we did honor Marie, which she should have been honored years ago for the work that she does. Mahalo.
Uncle.
But I'm just going back to this committee of the whole, like, so there's certain things that we gotta get done at any given board meeting, right? Maybe uh, maybe we don't have to get it all done at the same board meeting. Maybe we can approve the next quarter. I don't know. But um, you know, we, we, on the front end of the meeting, we hear from your representatives and, and so on and so on. Sometimes that, we lose. But if, if we met, say, um, from six to seven as a committee of the whole. Um, we get those same folks, we get those same folks to show up, the departments. I mean, it was great having Laura Thielen. Now, if, if we know we're gonna be talking about funds, then, then everybody and anybody who's interested can be, can be down on that meeting, really be focused and kept down on it, having a good hour. To talk about those issues, have a good discussion going. And then we try to deal with whatever business may feel like it's absolutely necessary. So same thing with infrastructure, like Ken says, what a great opportunity to get DOT, DTS, um, you know, HPD. Um, everybody who's dealing with highways and byways and so on, all the players. And, and whether they are able to participate in person or virtually. One of the advantages of virtual participation, although this is the worst room project we can meet. But one of the advantages of, of virtual participations, they have no excuse not to be there. They can be there and they can do screen sharing and, you know, bigger screen and really being able to focus on an issue with the resources that can be brought to bear. So I mean, I just want to see they really work and graduate to that kind of detail. So did anybody going ways? Christie got, got up there telling us about the Kula Pukua Resiliency thing, that meeting that I was able to attend. I, you know, it's on, it's, you can actually view it, I think. See red on green. You can actually do it. Listening to Chip Fletcher describing what's happening in Kula Pukua. Chip Fletcher was looking at sea level rise, you know, more than maybe anybody else in, in the world. And we could actually say, Chip, so they're gonna build Waheh Old Bridge. What should we be looking at when they, when they realign and, and that highway and build a bridge? Should we be now raising that bridge up maybe another five feet? You know, I mean, those kind of things. We need to be able to apply the latest and greatest thinking to whatever issue we're dealing with. Actually, I mean.
Yeah.
So I'll do it, yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all your guys' thoughts. Um, Keoni, online? Keoni? No, no, there is.
Can you hear me now?
There you are. You're there.
Okay. No, yeah, it's just, you know, like, I just wanted to touch base on what um Dan was talking about. Um, you know, I, I understand because I have been virtual for the last few meetings. But it's, it's not like, it's not an excuse. It's just, this is what's happening to me personally. I, I have a toddler and a teenager and I my wife is working in the hospital and she just so happens to keep getting scheduled on these nights and this is the only way that I can take care of that, right? Um, and there's, you know, there's the other thing is like, I, I tried to speak earlier about community concerns because I had one, but I was overlooked. You know, I was trying to get everybody's attention and stuff, but I, I didn't hit the hands up, I guess. So I don't mind. But like, that's, that's the other thing is, a lot of the time when we're sitting here, e- even when we're sitting together, the conversations tend to get off track. Like, we all, also, I, I feel in my opinion, have to keep ourselves on track. You know, state what you need to, listen. And then like the next move, like a lot of the time, a lot of us are trying to fish for the answer that we want from the people that we're talking to. But they just don't have it. And you can ask the question twenty different ways and they still won't have the answer. It's also our responsibility, I believe, to understand that. Like, the, the, it, it's, it is, it is partially that like half of us aren't there. But like, even when we all are there, it still tends to go the same direction. And I just wanted to point that out. It's like, you know, nowadays, both of us have to be working. Like, and, and like, that's just to pay my mortgage. Like, I can't pay my mortgage and then sixteen hundred dollars for somebody to watch my kid so I can do this. But I also want to be an active part of my community.
Yeah, no, I agree, Keoni. I think what I'm just looking more at is because the thing with my, the thing why I wanted to bring up committees is because I, I felt that there are other people out in the community who have other input, who don't attend neighborhood board meetings and who are not on the neighborhood board, who I feel could benefit the neighborhood, should they be on a committee, right? Because there only needs to be two members from this board on the committee. And so long as there's two people always ready to have availability to commit that, yeah. I mean, because
I feel bad about that too.
That can be brought back to the, and that can be brought back to the greater board.
Because I was supposed to be, I was supposed to be working with Mary to like do the emergency thing and then life just took over like, and I kind of feel
No, and that's, and that's
And I'd like to revisit that if Mary's still on, online. I'd like to revisit that. Because um, I do really respect the whole emergency disaster preparedness side of everything. So like, I, I would be game in the, even if I couldn't marry, like we could set like once a month, Sunday morning or something, breakfast at Zippy's or something like that. You know what I mean? Like, if, if it's scheduled, I can keep to it. I know that this day every month, I am obligated to be here.
Yeah, no, it would, yeah. I would, I would definitely try and, you know, make it as clear and concise. Um, but you know, this is, I, I just wanted to put this on, on the table to just get input, right? Because I never got no emails, yeah. Yeah, members, I never get no emails. Uncle Ken?
I'd like to say that uh, uh, Parker's system works. That's the way we've been doing ours and it does work. You know, the, the people, there's two of us at least, sometimes three on the committee. The public deals with us, we help them get what they need done. And then if it's important enough, we report it and the, they want it to be allowed to be public, um, then we uh let the board know. And uh, but you know, doesn't always happen that way. But Parker's, what you said works. And it's been working for, for decades. Thank you.
Yeah, but, you know, we can revisit it. I just want everyone to kind of keep it in their minds going into the next meeting, yeah. So nothing to, you know, ponder on, but just put a pin in that, yes. Um, can I get a motion to approve Wednesday's August fourteenth, regular meeting minutes?
Okay, so I'll have Rocky move the approval for the minutes and then I'll have Bender have the second. Okay. Any discussion on the minutes? Very none. Okay, go to a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then any opposed, aye? And any abstentions? Okay, with that, the minutes has been approved. I believe I have seven members present. Sorry, I mean eight now. Thank you.
All of ritual. Um, any sub-district reports? We're just gonna go down the line, Sub District One. Bridge. Sounds good. Well, other bridge, Sub District One will keep us posted. Sub District Two. They're online. Nope. Nope, okay, Sub District Three?
Yeah, so there's a
Oh, oh, sorry. Wait, Keoni, what is that? Two?
Three.
Three, okay. Sorry. Keoni, you go first.
Oh, okay. No, yeah, I just wanted to bring up because it was a community concern, but um, there's a boat, there's an abandoned boat parked at the bottom of Kuna Lepo and Cam Highway. Um, one of the constituents here in the neighborhood wanted me to bring it to the board's attention and see what we could do about it. It was previously parked on the straightaway by the Hiahe Boar Harbor for a week or so. And before that, it was actually parked on Ferington Highway by the Kapa Lake Junction.
But now it's here on our, on our road, so I just wanted to throw that out there, if anybody knows what we can do about it. Um, I actually found out the information of the boat's owner. Um, he actually lives in, like, town somewhere. But, yeah. That's all, that's all we got to report, besides that, everything else has been good.
Thank you, Keone, Mandy Rocky, you had something to say? Ati? Homeless issuing, hey, you, Keone, okay, malanui, uh, Sub District Four, oh no, one more? Yeah? Okulea? Yeah, show me the mic, Ati.
He's gonna be doing, gonna be doing educational programs throughout the state. And I think it's December third, I'm not sure on the date, but I'll bring it up next month's meeting. He will be landing in, uh, Kaniua Bay, he will be going to Mokooloa, uh, Mokapu, and Wahehia Pier. And, but, but I'm mentioning it, and I'm so sad that everybody left before I can mention it, because we're gonna have to do the appropriate protocol and to greet them when they're coming in and, and, and stuff. So I'll let you know the dates for sure next month. And we'll be working with Mariko Awai too.
Sounds good.
Hello?
Mahalo. Ken, anything for Sub District Four?
Uh, yeah, Maurice Amudio and I are working on one, possibly two issues. And, uh, if it becomes important enough, we'll, uh, mention it to the board. Thank you.
Right on, I have nothing for my side, Sub District Five?
So for the Ahui Mato Homeowners Association, there's a meeting on the twenty-ninth. And I'll mention to people, I'll ask if they're interested in, um, joining the neighborhood board.
Right on, um, you said that was the twenty-ninth, that's the meeting? Okay, I'll try and get you the draft of that flyer. Um, okay, and then we have no one for six. Okay, uh, I do have just one announcement that we got from Eko. Um, they're gonna be doing a utility pole installation on forty-six, four-nine-nine. No action, but just a, just a reminder for anyone out there in that area. Um, next regular board meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October ninth, six PM, Key Project. Um, and we did have a request out by, um, but Dan, if we're just gonna do, um, five-second moment of silence to close out the meeting before we adjourn, uh, in respect of nine eleven today. Meeting adjourned, malanui.